Five o'clock, let's stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam?
Here.
Right. Angela?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Here.
Um, Chat?
Yep.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Stephanie, thank you.
Did you call?
Yeah, I was gonna do it when we went in.
Okay.
Do we need to get him on record as being here?
He's just gonna be on the phone.
And what about the mayor?
He said he was, uh, had his visitation.
Okay.
Need a motion to go into executive session, including everyone at the table to discuss security matters? Is that how we would word it?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be an executive session.
Why wouldn't it?
It would be an open session.
For that topic, I would think.
Yeah.
I thought security was one that could be executive session. Okay.
Personnel? Yeah.
That wasn't the reason.
That wasn't the reason why anyways, right?
That wasn't the reason for the meeting.
It wasn't the reason.
The meeting is about securing village property.
Protective measures for village property.
Right.
Okay.
I. I, um. About different things for. For security for the village property, I just want to bring to the attention that I've been talking to different SRO officers and different policemen and officers. We need to discuss whether we want off-site recording or onsite recording. And if we want hard-wired cameras or local cameras. And if we want. Recording on at all times or recording only at certain times and whether we want. I'm brain dead right now, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
If we want recorded, people recorded being.
Are you talking about voices?
Yes, thank you.
Like audio?
Audio.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've been doing lots of pre-tests this week, so I'm like, if I don't have it in front of me, I'm losing my marbles. If we want audio recorded at all times or just the video. So those are the things we need to look at right now.
I have a question. Why do you want it anyhow?
This, this, yeah.
Who, who initiated it?
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
What?
Initiating it.
No, I said who. Somebody put it up to begin with, okay? Somebody's, uh, put the idea there to bug in somebody's ear, okay?
No, we've already had cameras here.
You have?
Yeah.
Yes.
Without, without. Notifying the residents and the public and so on and so forth, right?
No, it's on the door.
You don't have, you don't have to in a public place, Dave.
You don't?
First memory right. In a public place, where do you go that don't have cameras anymore besides, I mean?
There's, there's usually a post.
In every, it doesn't, I mean, that is not a law either. It is posted.
Where?
It's on the door.
Look, it's on the front door, it's on the windows out there.
Now.
It's been there.
Since when?
It's, oh, months.
What was the date? What was the date?
The date?
Yes.
I don't have to figure that out. I don't have to, I don't have to tell you that.
That's not the score.
Who put it in there? Who installed it? Who installed it?
Uh, I think it's point of order. I call it point of order.
Point of order.
Let's get on topic.
I think you, I think.
You're a point of order, I call it point of order.
I think people owe the public and residents of Arcadia explanation.
Stop it.
You're gonna.
We have a lot of cash in the building at all times. You don't think anybody can come in and steal?
Is that, that's funny? That's funny?
I worked here thirty-one years.
Yeah, but you know what, times is different, we all know times are different, things have changed.
Times are different.
Any day, somebody could come in here and rob her. We don't know this, we've had people in this town that got raped.
With all due respect.
Are we gonna talk about cameras that's in every public building? Any government building?
Mark. We're gonna get back on topic. So let's just continue. So what do we have right now, Mark? We have blink cameras. How many do we have?
That's nobody, there's no.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay, are all sides of the outside covered with them?
Except for one side.
What's not covered?
This side over here.
With the one with the back door?
Yes.
So. We might want one there.
Yes.
Well, how many are inside?
Two?
Three. No, yeah, there's, wait a second, there's six cameras.
Inside?
Because there's two, there's three cameras inside, yes. And then there's one in the shop.
Can you not hear me?
And one out front out here and one over up on the side by the fire station and one out front.
Okay.
Okay, can you repeat that again?
Okay, the one in the front.
Six cold blink cameras?
That's one, one in the front. On Gibson, one facing the fire, by the fire station facing Gibson. Or facing, um.
Anger.
Yeah, and then, uh, there's one in the shop. One facing towards the safe. One facing in my office facing down the hallway. And one currently in this meeting room. And that's it. Let me go. Five.
Six.
Yeah, six.
Is there one facing that night?
I have.
Yes.
Did I miss that, I'm sorry? What'd you say, Steph?
I only have five left. The front, two, three, four, five, six. One facing.
The fire hall?
Oh, I missed the fire side. Fire hall.
These cameras are just controlled by us. Meaning the village, not us, that's the village.
That's on, yes.
Exactly, yes. The village.
Yes.
And right now, the plan that's on them, it doesn't save any of the video?
Right now, it is on, that, that one, since we placed that, the, um, it's on a seven day trial.
It's on trial, but we haven't had.
Yeah, on, it went back on it because we activated another camera.
Okay.
That wasn't on, that was the one we was gonna put over here on the side we.
And if we don't have a trial, how much is it?
Hundred and fifteen a year.
And that gives unlimited storage or whatever?
Yes, yes, cloud, cloud coverage and, um, but, yep. It's through Blink now, it's on the whole plan, yes.
So no matter how many cameras it is, it's that price?
Yeah.
Does it matter, Mark, like, like so if we have some here and we have some at the cold storages?
Now, that's gonna be different.
Because they're far enough away.
Well, yeah, that'd be a, because you have to have a different module for it, yeah.
That's, yeah, so if you.
That'd be a separate cloud base and stuff.
So we'd have to have two separate subscriptions?
Yes, unless you find something.
It might be worth looking into other types of cameras as well.
Like, like we talked about, that's what I'm saying. Some other, like.
That have better systems for what we're doing.
But you don't wanna, you know, spend a whole lot of money on, you know, but you also wanna make sure, you know, your accountability and then your protection.
Serving the purpose.
But that's for, hundred fifteen is for the month and, and it comes with, um, did I show you? I think I, I don't have my phone on.
It was for the year.
Yeah, I, I did take a, a picture of it, it is. Let me see here. Yeah, so it'll do the saved and shared clips, live view recordings from your Blink devices conveniently in the cloud. Experienced advanced features like person detection, meet, Blink moments and more, which you can get all this information from Blink. B-L-I-N-K.
We had a question.
I would just, uh, I know you guys have Blink cameras already, uh, but for a suggestion, if you guys are looking for the other places, I use Unifi.
I've heard, that's, that's a good, good one.
That's what I've said as well when I used to do, I, a lot of IT work, so.
Oh, did you, yeah.
They, they're all.
Can you spell that, I'm sorry?
Unifi, U-N-I-F-I.
Yeah.
F-I.
Yep, they are, it's all one contained system, you don't pay for a subscription or anything, so you just pay for the cameras and the controller and then.
It's a hard drive, it's from.
And that's how the wise cameras we have are too, it's just, it'll go back like a couple, couple days without a subscription. You just have to have the memory card in the camera.
So with my controller at my house, it has like a terabyte or whatever, um, I've got four cameras out there and it's over sixty days of storage, so, and it records all the time, so.
And that's for four cameras?
Yeah. The, the cameras are a little pricier than the Blink cameras, but they're.
But everything comes packaged together?
Yeah, you need to buy the controller and then pick your cameras that you want or whatever, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the information.
Question. Are you putting batteries in these Blink cameras a lot? Because that's what I have, I might have batteries.
No, I even have it at home and I, I've, I've, I've had them for three years now and I put one set of batteries in, in three cameras, but I don't have them.
But in town, I've seen.
I don't have them, uh, you know, running a, um, a forty-five second clip either. They're running a fifteen or, or twenty second clip, the more, the more time you have and, and, you know, your night vision, the light come on, yeah.
The cameras you have, are they hardwired or?
Yeah, they're, you can, they have wireless options, but you still have to power them in some way. So usually just a power over ethernet switch, so. Which they make a power over ethernet five port switch that mounts in a weather protected box and everything, so. Mounts right in there, it's all enclosed, so you just run your wires up into it and then connect everything and it powers it through that switch and communicates, so.
Nice.
We might wanna look into that and see what we can find. And then readdress possibly changing cameras at our next meeting. Do we want to discuss plans for those we have, should we move one so that all sides of our building are covered?
I think at least all the doors.
I think all the entrances need to be covered.
You said there's ones in here right now?
Mm-hmm.
So that could be moved outside, is an outdoor one?
Yeah.
Okay. And you said that's the only side that's not covered right now?
Correct.
Is there a door in between the, like, the garage door?
Out there?
Yeah.
No, it's just that one sitting in there, so it's like facing like, so if you walk in that door.
Isn't it facing more towards the other building than our building?
Oh, the one outside is, no.
Like there's no.
Shop, it's just facing towards the shop door, that's why it's called shop door.
Oh, so you do have one on the shop?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but not outside.
Oh, it's on the, I got you, Mark, you're right, I got you.
Do they record audio and video right now?
Hi. And right now, we don't have any internet capabilities down at cold storage, do we?
No, not. They just dug the, uh, or they just, uh, did the oops to.
They were down there.
Put a new cable down there. Oh, they, did they do it today? Okay, because when we put the garden in, we kinda hit the.
So they put it deeper?
They only had it like this deep in the ground.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, it's not the end of the world.
Can I interject, can I interject something here real quick?
Sure.
Yes.
Um, I heard somebody say audio and visual, and I, I guess if you're looking at security cameras, you're talking about cameras on the interior of the building?
Mm-hmm, both.
Interior and exterior.
All right, my only concern is, um, there may be things that are confidential that may be discussed inside the office. Um, is there gonna be any method by which, um, audio recording can be turned off, turned back on? In other words, I don't, I don't want a situation where something is being discussed confidentially and it's being recorded and then we get a public records request for all audio recordings.
Hey, John, this is Mark. Can you check in, can you check into that? Because I, I wanna be, make sure that, um, I'm not saying anything, but you know, you're, this, it's a public place and when you, you talk about your First Amendment rights and talk about things in, in public, you gotta understand that you're in public. So whatever can be heard can be.
But what he's saying, Mark, is if, if someone in the office is having a private conversation that has to do, that is.
But, but the public place, we shouldn't be having public, we shouldn't be having private conversations.
In our office?
In our office, correct.
Well, let me, let me.
I'm just saying, I'm just wanting to find out for sure, for sure, because if, so if I walk into a, a post office and I'm filming and somebody's talking and stuff like that, I have the, all the right in the world to do that, to do so, whether I'm on audio or anything.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna give you one hypothetical example, and that's in the event that, um, somebody, some, someone there at the village calls upon an attorney to obtain legal advice.
That's what I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, John, I'm just, can we check into this further?
Yeah, we can, I just wanted to, I didn't wanna end up in a situation where.
Okay, so you're, the question, the answer to the question, yes, we can shut it off on just that camera. We could shut it off on any camera, we could shut off anytime.
I think that's something we should look at all of them too, to see how the.
You know, the audio or the video, you can do one or the other.
Okay, right, but you have to have somebody who has the.
And that's, that's, that's exactly the same thing, unless you just, just designated that camera just to film and not have any audio on it. Just, just video, you know what I mean?
I think that's kinda what he's saying.
You can, you can do it on every camera if you wanted to, it's just up.
I just wanted to make sure that that was an option.
Yes, it is an option.
Because I, I'm gonna give you one more example, and this just popped into my brain. Do you have cameras inside council chambers?
Right now, ye, uh, yes, but it's, they're not on.
Right, but the.
Oh, yes, yeah, I know what you're saying, so like on an executive session, yes, they can, yes, yeah, totally, yeah.
Correct. All right, that's all I needed to bring up.
Okay, thanks.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, and this is just my brain right now, but if, if somebody's coming in and they're trying to pay their bill and trying to do things and they're having issues and they don't want everything blasted out in the public, is there a way we could just have? No audio during the day?
Then you're gonna be turning it off and on?
That's true.
You need to have it off.
I think we need to have it off.
Well, I don't think if somebody's gonna come in here and rob something or hold, well, other than.
If somebody robs something, you know what, who they are, it doesn't matter what they say.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Cameras on the inside of the building need to be turned, but video or audio needs to turn off, only audio.
Audio off.
Just have the video.
Audio can be outside.
Yeah, you really don't even need them on, I mean, the cameras.
Don't need it outside either.
Sometimes don't even have my, mine are even on half the time, so the audio. Because if the camera goes off and then you only hear the crickets and, yeah, and stuff, so.
So, John, would it be safe, safe to recommend that we just really need video for the outside and the inside?
I think that's, at a bare minimum, I think that's a good recommendation. I, I was just raising the issue because I don't know if there's a need for audio. And that's why, that's why I raised it.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking of things I'm dealing with at school right now too, with different students and parents and things, and so I'm like.
Sometimes those things are private.
Those things are private, they don't want anybody to know, so I don't advertise anything, I just do what I need to do and I don't. Public doesn't have access to the cameras either.
No.
No, so, right, and the public does not have access to the cameras.
So who's all gonna have access to these cameras?
That's a great question, Jenny. Can I ask you, sir, a question with, with your Unifi?
Yeah.
They control it or does it just store on that?
It's stored on that one device, um, anybody can access, like say I.
Like on your phone?
I can share it to somebody to access from their phone or give other people access to it. I would make a recommendation that it's locally stored and nobody has access to on their phone, if I can make a suggestion here. And that way, if there is an incident that happens, you can.
Review it.
Get onto it from here, you know what I mean, from like, say the computer here or something like that. That way, nobody has it on their phone, but it is kinda hard to do that because you can log into that account on your phone, so. I don't know how you guys wanna go about that, that was kinda my concern too, is who would have access to it, so you can lock it down, you can also share it out to whoever, so.
That, that's my concern too, because I've been asking at school with all of our security cameras and things of that nature in different public buildings, how, how do people access it? And our SRO officer and the admin are the only ones that have access and they can only see it when they're in the building. Because they have to look at it for bullying purposes or.
But, and do they not, they only look at it when someone has made.
Yes.
A request or complaint, they don't just watch it?
And that is all, and then it's not viewed at all times, so.
Which that's would be like, ideal, ideal.
Yeah, and on, on your server would be.
If you had like a, you know. Yeah, you just had like a hard drive, like you were saying, a terabyte or whatever it is.
Does it happen to offer an easy way to back it up to the cloud? In case someone knew what it was and came in and stole that, so you couldn't watch your video?
I hadn't even thought about that.
Yeah, they have, um, a section where you can storage up to the cloud and everything like that, um.
And I'm sure that costs.
You just have to delete old stuff, oh.
That costs the money. Yeah, and it will automatically delete anything old, so it will, you can set it up to backup, say like nightly or whatever, and it'll go up to the cloud, then that would be your monthly cost or yearly cost or whatever, um, but if you're storing it just locally, then it's no cost, just the cost of the equipment, so.
You mean that?
Yeah, and you have that.
We look into that.
You got the, you ever wanna?
I, I wrote it down, Unifi.
Yep.
I wrote down what he said.
If you guys have any other questions, you can feel free to give me a call or.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our chat guy's been super busy, so I haven't had a chance to contact him, it's the first week of school. I just think for right now, until we make it an absolute decision which way we wanna go, we just need to get another camera hooked up so that we can view all sides of the building and. All entrances and exits and get that taken care of and. Maybe just turn off the volume and go from there for now.
Does someone have to make a motion for that or is just discussing it? Enough?
I would say, does anybody disagree with that and that should be enough? Everybody's, yeah, that is probably fine, we don't need a motion for that as long as, yeah.
Yeah, different options.
We have a consensus, and we're not, and we're not making a final decision in general, yeah.
Okay, so that's just to move one camera to outside and only record video.
Put these cameras, Mark, is it possible to turn the volume back on? It's not, it's not, I mean, what I'm saying is it's not recording.
You just mute the whole system.
It's not recording the volume or the audio at all times, we're just shutting it off?
Oh, that's.
You can't go back?
Yeah, you can't go, it's, yeah, it's just like mute and gotcha.
A recording.
Yeah.
Sometimes when you mute stuff, it doesn't, it keeps recording the audio and you can go back and turn the audio back on.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we don't do that. Okay. Point of just researching our options. Do want.
Can we ask any questions at all? Because I do have a security question that I think is still in this category, I know we need to stick with security.
You can ask.
What is our protocol for people to have the code to the outside doors? And my concern is, I have seen, seen people that are not employed by the village use the code, put the code pad in, the number in, and they've gotten in the building. So what is your protocol on who has those numbers?
I would be curious to know who came in our building that was employed.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, when we were planting gardens, we had an individual, we needed, we needed tools because the containers that we were do, using needed to have sixteen screws in them. And so I said, I'll go home and get my, I'll go home and get my, uh, battery operated screwdriver. And one of the people that was helping us says, I know the code to the maintenance building, we could get in there and see if they have tools. And I said, no, I'll go home, I don't wanna know the code to the secure, to the maintenance building at the.
So the person that got in the code was someone that was helping with the project?
They're not employed by them.
I'm just asking if that's what you're.
They were helping with the gardening project.
Yeah, okay.
And I said, no, and when I came back with the tools and we asserted, if you just would've let me know, I could've gotten you in that building and you could've gotten. I don't think people that are not employed here, that's a security breach as far as I'm concerned, so.
Yeah, definitely.
If you're worried about that and that sort of thing, you should, and you should be changing them like every, every whip stitch or something. That's, that's my question, I just wondered who that, who had access to getting those out.
I don't know what it is.
I don't know it even.
I don't even know it.
So it's funny that.
Then maybe we need to change the code to a door.
Yeah.
We did, the mayor, Brad Mead, changed it.
Changed it again. Changed it again.
Somehow they're getting it.
Well, that was the other topic I wanted to talk on, which was perfect transition, because I wanted to talk about restricting access outside of normal business hours to only those who would have to have keys to the building.
Yeah, so. That would be limiting, limiting access to Amy, Mark. Jason.
I was saying, does Ruthie ever get here before you?
No, but she does do things like.
Well, she fills in when you're out, right?
She fills in for me, or there might be something that she's doing when it's after hours, where she, like, she might need to grab something.
But she's also the heart and soul coordinator for some things on the weekends too.
Yeah, she's, yes.
That's true, like this weekend.
Being the heart and soul coordinator, she's also been hired by the village to do it.
So, you got Brett, right?
No, not yet.
And then.
Amy, Mark, Jason, yeah, Brett, um. Would Ruthie ever need?
That's what she was just talking about.
Yeah.
That's what she was just talking about.
Yeah.
If anybody else requires it, we can always add that, but I would limit it to those.
Well, and like emerge, like say you need to get in, somebody in town, like if there was some reason that someone would need to get in after hours.
Right.
More than likely, somebody could help with that, like Jason would be able to let you in.
Yes, I would just call Mark or somebody.
See what I'm saying though, like, if there was a need to be here, you would just need access from a person that has.
Right.
Yeah.
So who did you list?
I got Amy, Mark, Jason, the mayor, Brett, and Ruthie.
The mayor need one?
He's the mayor, he has an office in his building.
I don't think he needs to access the building right now outside of normal business hours.
Like there's not a need, like Ruthie has a need in case she would come after. I don't know.
Well, are his, are his regular working hours?
He's here, he works till two right now, and I think they'll change when school starts.
Right, that's from ten to.
They might not, then he might be though till six, cause he was, I think he was working till six last year, it was later, it was after business hours.
His hours run from six in the morning till two in the afternoon, and then from two in the afternoon till, I think, ten o'clock at night.
He was going, he was getting in.
And he was doing the two, two to ten at some points too, it can change.
Yeah, last time he was doing more like a eleven to six or ten to six kinda thing.
If he had to, he'd come up after two o'clock or before, before two o'clock, um, I'm just saying. The mayor's the mayor, and if he needs to get in here too.
I put it back on staff and chat, would you wanna, you, if you had to meet like the solar people, we had to meet with them after hours or whatever. I think there are times when the mayor needs to meet after hours, I think you guys would have experienced that.
Yeah.
It is a possibility.
It is a possibility, and that's why I'm bringing it up, I just. It's on a rare, rare occasion, but like I said, we can, we can also schedule, schedule up stuff. But I come up here after hours when I'm at with the residents too.
I would rather start with the fewest people possible, and we can always expand from there.
Understood.
It also makes a little bit of sense to see what the need is for the people that don't have it.
Okay, those are just the, the six people that. I see that. We even have a reason to come up here after business hours. And it's just those six.
Those six are pretty much where we're at now.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, so. And I'm just gonna say this a lot, the reason for the, the cameras is past. Employees who then were fired, still had access to the building, and they got rid of an awful lot of stuff. They, uh, deleted passwords on their computers for, um, what was it, Teresa, for the, uh. The water and the things of that nature.
Well, and I do remember, I would have a computer guy that would come up from Columbus and he would have to work after hours. Like maybe changing out, upgrading software, and honestly, they can get on with PC anywhere now, but I mean. There were times when some of the people could only work in the evenings, I mean, those would be isolated too, but.
And somebody should be up here from the village, resident, right, well.
At the same time, yes.
If they're in this building, somebody who's employed by the building should be up here with them. To maintain the security, um, yeah, so those are my recommendations, with those six. I don't think we need to vote on it, it's just a matter of. Getting the, uh, getting the combinations, I guess there's only just that one.
Two, well, there's one here, unless you just wanna do away with that and just go back with the key, I mean, it's, it's, it's nice to have that, but.
It is, but.
It's just, just go with it, just go back. That means you can, if you lock yourself out, you're gonna have to call one of us.
I have to, that's what happened before.
I don't have a key either, so.
But I mean, it makes sense, I mean, they, they are convenient, but.
They are, but sometimes they're too convenient.
We have those on all of our doors, the problem's gonna be when the dementia sets in and I can't remember the cards to all the stores.
Right.
I could see myself just punching where the numbers going, what is this?
I do that now, um.
I mean, I know the school and everything has swi- swipes and stuff.
They have key cards and stuff, but I don't think we need to go to that extreme.
No, just to break it.
So what is everything about, changing them back to keys, so the only access is key access?
How hard would it, do we have, do we have doorknobs that go back in those two spots?
Sure, yeah. Except for the one that's gonna need to be repainted, because it has the square, we'll just have to repaint around the door, you know, with regular. Can look into them.
It's probably easier to keep track of too, then you'll know exactly who has the key.
Yeah.
They're not changing their passcode every time.
Yeah, they're just one key for everything, and I guess it's just.
This isn't a big building or a big area that I, yeah.
Probably need to change the current locks, cause we don't really know who all has keys.
Right.
Yeah, and that's another thing is too, is what we was talking about, even the padlocks for around town, everything is all one key, you know what I mean? And that key's been the same for I don't know how many years, I'm, I mean.
You can always have them re-tumble.
Yeah, I don't even know who even, and them are like some really good locks, so, them were really good locks.
Just take out the. Yeah, locksmiths should be able to take care of that, get them rekeyed, put different pins in them. I could do it, but I'd have to rack my brain a little bit. Right, yeah, okay.
I say just go ahead and go back to keys and have an issue with people and don't lock yourself out, Amy.
I will.
If you do, just make sure you have your phone so you can call Mark.
I do, I mean, it's been a long time since I had to make a call, but it happens.
Right.
We need to rekey. Doors and, uh.
Change a couple of the factors.
I'm starting to come back around. Shake my brains. Yeah, and I would do that as soon as possible.
Mark, how long would it take you to move that one camera?
To move it?
Yeah.
I can move it in about ten seconds, but putting it back, putting it up and putting it over there, it's probably gonna take fifteen, twenty minutes. Finding a spot for, and then, you know, mounting it, you know, getting a ladder.
And testing the video to make sure it covers what you want, yeah.
I mean, it won't take that long.
And the other thing I was gonna ask, right now, the, we only have the cameras on at all after hours, like even the exterior ones?
No, there are.
Or are the outside ones on all the time?
No, outside ones, the whole system goes off at seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, and then five, four thirty, remember? We just leave them on right now, I mean, they're, they're off, but.
Get rid of the video or the auto, we don't want, yeah.
Once the audio's gone, we just leave them on.
Just leave them on all the time. We have game plan.
That's all stuff Mark's pretty much gonna have to take care of.
Right.
So, make sure he has the list of everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll leave the cameras on twenty-four seven, turn the audio off.
Yep, put, move the other one over there, check into that, them cameras what he has.
Change all the condo locks to key, key locks.
Yep.
Yeah, if we can look in and see what it would cost to rekey those locks, like you said.
He just did that when Brian started too, that's how we did it.
Okay.
The pad, or the, okay, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 that's right, you're right, that's right.
Anything else, security related, anyone has to say? Okay. You get a motion to adjourn?
Second? Angela? Chat?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hey, thanks, thank you, good evening.